I got two minutes.
Yeah, the March one is the longest, you know, it's the, I'm not going to say the worst one because, but it's a two-day commitment, so it's. Honestly, the last few years, I bet you we haven't seen more than a dozen people at the most. We do get a lot of write-ins, you know, some people just write in and it's maybe, maybe like a real obvious thing that we have to fix, and so those we just sign and approve all at once, but actual people, I don't know, literally, we only have three people signed up for two days. But, I mean, between now and then, I'm sure we'll get more, but yeah, yeah. They have to be here from nine to three on Monday.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order, the East Bay Township Plan Commission, Tuesday, March 4th. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ian, can we get a roll call, please?
Oh, awesome. Edley?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Leonard?
Here.
And it's noted that Mindy is absent and excused. Mindy Walters is absent.
Thank you. Next up is a review for conflict of interest. Does anyone have anything to declare? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the Tuesday, March 4th Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Renee, seconded by Carl, for approval of the agenda as stated. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next up is approval of the meeting minutes in a spirited meeting from the Joint Planning and Township Board meeting a few weeks ago. Any changes, corrections, alterations we need to talk about?
I'll move to, excuse me, approve the meeting minutes of the February 18th, 2025 special joint meeting. Support?
Thank you. Motion by Paul, seconded by Steve to approve the meeting minutes as stated. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Up next is public comment. Anybody who has anything they'd like to discuss for the township, please step up to the lectern. You've got three minutes at a crack. Don't rush up. Going once, going twice. Okay, we appreciate it more than you believe. Correspondence, I don't think we have anything new this evening, other than what's before us. We had a little updated site plan Claire's going to get into shortly. Moving right along, we'll look at reports from the Township Board. Anything new that we need to update on, Claire?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, makes it easy. Paul, you're up, ZBA.
Hmm, no meeting.
Even easier. Back to you, Claire.
Okay, just two quick updates. One is that Bill, zoning administrator, sent out last week over 200 letters to builders, to tree trimmers, to landscapers with details on the environmental sensitive standards. So it, you know, kind of focused on Lake's area, but really reaches out to just anyone that's doing work in the township related to wetlands, floodplains, kind of all of the standards in the updated ordinance. We're also going to be continuing that and communicating with realtors as well. So just to kind of make sure we're getting the word out. We've also been connecting with lake associations and just trying to get the word out as much as possible. As many of you are aware, anytime a new resident purchases a property in an environmentally sensitive area, we're also sending letters out to those, to those new homeowners or property owners. And then did want to let you know, we've got a date for our agriculture and open space public forum, I think is what we're calling it. So as you'll recall, we, you know, had talked in some detail about appropriate zoning density outside of the urban growth boundary, and so we're going to take a little deeper dive on that. We're going to have Mary Riley with MSU Extension. She's also going to bring in some additional speakers for kind of an education component at the beginning, and then some kind of community input and some kind of small group brainstorming. So that's going to be on Tuesday, May 27th, that evening. It's going to be the day after Memorial Day. And leading up to it, we're also hoping to take a little deeper dive into kind of like better understanding or quantifying like exactly what agriculture, active ag land exists in the township. What are the crops? Kind of provide a little bit more detail about that. So we'll be taking a look at that prior to the, to that evening.
Is that at six?
You know, I think we're probably going to, we're thinking like 5:30 to 7:30 or something. Yeah, a little bit like early evening, but after work.
Sounds good. Any questions for Claire? Okay, moving right along to new business for the planning commission. First up is site plan review four dash 25, Crimson. Claire, if you don't mind, you want to set the tables for us on this project?
Sure. So as you'll recall, you, this is the, almost an identical site plan to what you reviewed during the sketch plan review back in September. But it's 240 units on 20 acres, so that maximizes the new allowable density of 12 units per acre. There's a, as you'll see in the packet, diversity of unit sizes. There's a number of different amenities for residents. There's, you'll see there's paved connected pathways throughout the development, as well as with the adjacent right-of-way and connects to a future development. We have had a few discussions related to housing. The applicants indicated that they're interested in brownfield tiff, that if this was approved, that that process would come back before the township board, kind of to hammer out the details. But that would be to support a mix of workforce housing for the development. We've also had a meeting with Goodwill and just kind of exploring the My Neighborhood Grant Program to see if we can have, set aside a few units that are for permanent supportive housing, so really looking at kind of how can we have a broad diversity of housing there that meets, meets the needs of this community. The Beta, we've been in communication with Beta, they're committed to accommodating this new development, just given the number of new residences that it's going to bring to East Bay Township. So they're planning to provide transit to the, to this location. Most likely, it will come through the Meadowlands Drive is probably the best option, and so the applicant, kind of through discussions with Beta, has moved the bus stop kind of near Meadowlands Drive to better accommodate that. We've reached out to TCAPS for input on the bus stop. They had indicated that they would provide some feedback, and I've reached out a few, a few follow-up times and haven't heard anything. So we'll continue to work with TCAPS, but haven't gotten any specific guidance from them. They, I just received correspondence from Grand Traverse County Road Commission. They're in support of the development. They've reviewed the transportation impact study. The Three Mile Construction, as many of you are aware, is coming in 2025. So actually, at that entrance, there's going to be a dedicated left turn lane, so it's going to be increasing from two lanes to three lanes. And so that will work well with, with this development and doesn't require like an additional turnoff lane. And additionally, the, there's Hammond Road reconstruction is slated for 2026, which will improve that intersection as well, both to benefit this development. Grand Traverse Metro, Grand Traverse Metro Fire, I have not received any formal correspondence, but I did talk with Brian Belcher last week, and they didn't have any concerns related to the site plan. I think they were looking for a few additional hydrants, but nothing, nothing substantial. And based on the additional review, the applicant has added quite a bit of additional buffering between the development and the residential properties, a long Three Mile. They have also added a sidewalk connection to the northwest corner of the site. You'll see that in the staff review, there's 100% of the plants are native, so I really didn't have any concerns. They also put together like a maintenance and easement connections. We've sent that over to the township attorney to review our new legal counsel, so that would be one of the connect, conditions of approval, but other than that, didn't, didn't really have anything specific.
Sounds good. Any questions, Claire? Okay, the applicant's here. How's it going this evening? Eh, you know, it's going the other way. It's that time of year.
Good evening. I'm Doug Meansfield with Mansfield Land Use Consultants in 8:30 Cottage View Drive, Suite 201, Traverse City, here on tonight on behalf and with Crimson Development out of Lansing. Steve Calvary's with the faith, but the whole crew's here, and then we have Susan. Yep, with Dishback Thompson, who's the volunteer coordinator for the region up here. So if you have any questions, we're all here, especially operations, history, those kind of things. But I'll just run through the site plan real quick, and I'm going to start just at the south entrance. Obviously, this is a land, 20 acres of probably 500 or more acres that Bill and Tony Klaus own between Town Line, Hammond, and Three Mile Road, and have for some time. This project, this piece of land, has been part of several planning initiatives in my career for the last 30-some years. None of them really clicked. I think they did the right thing, waited out, saw what the market's doing, and now is the time to do this and do it right. So we've carved out with Bill and Tony 20 acres of the land, and the property runs against Meadowlands Industrial Park and connects into the stub road, Meadowlands Drive at this location. Then it's about 1,000 feet to go out to Three Mile Road. Across from Three Mile Road is the smaller offices. About 800 feet to the north of our entrance is the entrance to the old Mitchell Creek Golf Course, now the Grand Traverse Conservancy. Vanderlip Road is about another 1,000 feet to the south. So when you look at our entrance, and there was no real coordinating benefit, particularly in that Three Miles going to three lanes or more in the future, so that connection of being across from each other really wasn't there. The, I will say, through this process, East Bay Township's had been working with us on basically creating, I won't say a master plan, but looking strategically at circulation of the entire parcel and how this would link with the other project, the land to the north, Hammond Road, everything. And that was taken into account, and a lot of the work done on the, on the traffic study also, the futuring of that. So I want you to know that staff was on that, the owners were on, or the clients were on that, and they, they did the right thing by trying to study as much as could be known as right now. We actually applied some densities to it. Land uses, maybe not so much, but some trips per day and those kind of things were projected. I think that's the first time we really thought about this piece regionally. So Meadowlands Industrial Park, you have Black Creek is the boundary to the west. The rest of the farmed area is to the north, all the way to the ponds. It's about another 20 acres, 30 acres, and then out to Three Mile Road. Three Mile Road has sewer and water there that we'll be connecting into. Three Mile Road is under construction this year after a long decades of promises, so we're ready to see that. And actually, as Claire said, they're adding a third lane in this location. However, we are still going to back our curbs off and do an A-cell, D-cell lane, okay, on each side of the approach, and we're using a, a right out, a left turn, and a left in. So we, it'll have a fairly wide approach, which became very apparent in this winter. So in trying to maintain those approaches and the roads themselves. We come in the entrance, then the clubhouse is the first thing you'll face. There is parking for the clubhouse there, and we talked about the need for that, and that is a hub for the community where vendors, contractors, new lease people, workers, all have to check, kind of check in. That's your mailbox drop, your business center. So there is a lot of things going on at the clubhouse. You turn in, and then the project simply circulates around the, the border of the land with the, the middle being developed off the Meadowlands effort to the north, and it, and it creates a lot of open space, a lot of buffer zones around the project. We were really conscious, even though some of the stream setbacks and such were minimized in the new ordinance, we're still using a lot of those old ones that were there, just because we were used to doing them and we're in the plan. The project, as Claire said, has ample parking, probably more parking than we usually have. Centered around the clubhouse is about 20, 30 spaces, but the remainder are either in carport or in open parking. And frankly, being this far out, looking at our marketplace where we may have one or two working people in, in here sharing an apartment, the parking's probably going to need, be needed. We did, the outlot does connect to a future road that Bill had programmed into a land division. Bill Klaus had programmed into a land division, so that's where that stubs out again. And I'll say, I even said, we'll do the future pedestrian connection if we have to do a future road connection. So I got, I got your planners on that one. So at Giffords Webster, that's one off on me. So, and then, so that bleeds out to an exist, that, that runs into alignment that comes down to an existing culvert over Black Creek, which would be the best permitted place to cross that road in the future. Okay? So there's a culvert right here right now, somebody in that road would go follow that alignment. So that was the agreed upon gesture to get this thing built, and that's what's in the easement. Along also the, the pedestrian and vehicular routes are the amenities. We've got two dog parks to the north, the big dogs and the small dogs, the tot lot with its own separate parking, and there's other passive picnic areas and grill areas scattered around the site. But it's all bounded by pedestrian ways around the entire thing. The Meadowlands Drive is a public road maintained by the county that's a stub road. We've done this before, even in East Bay Township, where it, in order to get, road commissions don't like stub roads, they don't like local roads, we know that. But in order to take it out of the maintenance of the plat of Meadowlands, it's basically civil action and takes a lot of time. So what we've done to satisfy the road commission is that we're going to put in this turnaround, basically cul-de-sac, where the road commission can come up here instead of backing around and maintaining this road, they can just loop around and go back out. That's also going to be the area for the Beta bus stop down at this end, so if you pick up any or drop off anybody in the dust truck, and then you pick up for the, the development here without congestion, turning movements on Three Mile. So it worked out really well. And I want to say, every bit of this was a hand-in-hand discussions with, with the township and the agencies. I think everything on this went really, really smooth for what it is. We learned a lot about the ordinance, and I do think, we have some discoveries, which maybe on one of these bigger projects, we should sit down and say, what did we find? Because one of the things is, we, you, we are required to do a buffer zone between the land use. We actually had to take, we, your buffer zone is so filled again, that it would be better to include the trees, our thought was, other places of the site. They would have done more importance, because there's so many of them. So we should actually sit down and look at some of the landscape thing, not, we understand it, there's no ginkgo trees in this proposal, we got that straight, but it may help to say, are we, are we expanding these plants and doing the right thing in the right areas with this? But so be it. We met the ordinance, we continued the tree line along Three Mile historically, the agricultural tree line. The parcel has a flaw in the sewer, I will say. We have to chase, what we call chase grade, about 1,000 feet to the north to catch a manhole that has enough depth for us to connect into it from here diagonally up there. So instead of putting in a pump station, and we're going to put a parallel sewer that's, that's chasing grade to get into that manhole to the north. Water's fine, it's there across it. As they said, they wanted a hydrant, I think, here and another one down at the end. We'll add those in from the fire department, but we've got plenty of pressure, plenty of space to run that. We provided the stubs for the future connection. Stormwater, because we have the wetland outlets, is a 25-year storm event, so we're not going to be digging real big, deep pits on this. There are shallow basins, they equalize themselves, so you don't have one flooding here and another one bare here. It's all equalized among all the ponds, which works out nice. There is actually, from, from south to north, it actually goes down in grade at about 3% or 4%. You don't see it in common grade, it doesn't appear that much, but for planning and engineering and those kind of things, it works extremely well with utilities and stormwater to get, to get things moving where they want to go. So again, we think we've met all the ordinances, the buildings themselves, and in past practice, what Crimson and Progressive put together is something that has a real keen agricultural vernacular to it, character, to it with the, the different board and battens running with the horizontal alignments. The filigree in the, in the rooftops is good. The colors, if they, if they chose to stick with what they've done in the past, would mix in with the agricultural character of the area. So the, the building does articulate, it's got some shed roofs coming off at lower levels, dormers, it's got covered porches, so it's got a lot of shade and shadow going with it. So I will say, it's important to this family of developers that they're providing for the workforce people, okay? So you won't see a pool, you won't see some of those other kind of amenities, you won't see stone. This is about getting people into safe housing, and it's, it's part of their mission, so. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and you can speak a little bit about your history, and potentially help Susan, if there's anything to do. And we're all here for questions.
First of all, I'd like to thank Doug, and Claire, and Beth Friend, who you've been great to work with. We were here in front of you six months ago, just to talk about what was needed to get to this evening. And I have to say, when, when I first heard about your practice, I was concerned, because, you know, just to get for site plan approval and the requirements is a considerable financial outlay. And so that made me nervous upfront, but then by giving a pre-meeting and letting us, letting you know what we're looking to do, and then getting your feedback ahead of time, was really, and then, of course, Claire's assistance and Doug's assistance through the whole process, it, it was, it was seamless. And a lot of work went into it, but I think you, you saw from what Doug presented, that we tried to take every, every concern that the township had into consideration, and tried to take into consideration the neighbors that will be abutting our property. And I was fortunate enough to, to meet with Teresa Carey at lunch today and try to address some of her concerns ahead of the meeting, so I'm sure she'll have more questions, but just trying to be as transparent as we can and try to do a project that's a win-win for everybody. So Crimson is a real estate investment development and property management company. So Crimson is the umbrella company. We have the property development, which is the, the entity that's working on this, on this project, and it stays with the development team until we get approval and close on the property, and then it transitions into the, to the official entity, which in this case would be Traverse City hyphen Central Park LLC will be the ownership entity. It'll stay a separate LLC, and that's how we do all our projects, and even though we're part of that group as well, we bring in, you know, we're, you know, we syndicate, we bring in other investors, and it's, a lot of them are the same, but a lot of them are different for each property. And, and I mention that because, you know, there's, there's, there's three hats here. There's the developer, then there's the investment entity and the investors, and then also the Crimson Property Management, we hire ourselves to manage the property. So we stay, you know, we're, we're, we stay involved from start to finish and continue to manage it all the way through. Kevin Kiefer, who's behind me, is our, is one of the owners and is our senior VP of Operations, and he'll be the one that, that does the hiring and supervises the onsite leasing staff, the community manager, leasing assistants. And then Glenn Prinzing, who's our senior VP of Construction, who's also, has an owner of the company, hires and manages and supervises the maintenance staff that maintains the property. We have onsite, full-time maintenance, you know, 24-hour on-call for after-hours, so we're, we're, we don't build and walk away. It's, it's ours, we're vested in it, we're, like I said, we're part of the ownership group as well. So that's a little bit about us. We've been in business since 2000, and we currently own and manage just under 2,000 units, and then we'll add, you know, the whole goal is to add 240 here. We're also in the process of adding 144 in Muskegon and another 216 in, in the Lansing area. So we're, we're gearing towards 3,000 pretty quick. But we, our office, our main office is in East Lansing, we also have a Grand Rapids office, but all of the administration has done in East Lansing, and even though we're scattered around the state, you know, all the accounting and financials come through, come through our office, and we've got a team of, an executive team there, and then we, you know, we manage the people in the, in the field. That's kind of how we're structured, and it's, it's worked very well for us, and has allowed us to continue to grow, because as we grow, every once in a while, we add somebody at the, at the, at our, at our central office, man, the county people, because as we grow, obviously, there's more, more availables, more payables, and more financial management. But the property itself is managed locally. We hire the community manager, we, we oversee them, and, you know, Kevin, Kevin, you know, does all the training, but they, they make all the decisions locally. And, you know, we're, we teach all of our employees to manage it as if you own it, and try to empower them to be able to make the decisions rather than the old, well, let me check with my manager, you know, let me check with corporate. We want, you know, we want immediate feedback. We, we take a lot of pride in, in our reputation, and I think if you, if you check us out, you can, you can go to our website, you know, crimson.com, and it'll show you, you can navigate through every community we build in, and tell you all about us, the principles and background, et cetera. We're, we're excited about the opportunity to, to be in East Bay Township, and as you all know, with the recent spike in interest rates, labor and material inflation, we've built a lot of different products over the years, from Class A to, we've got into the workforce housing product. The workforce housing, I know, is, is, is just simply classified as rents that fall within 80, 120% of the local AMI. I know the township's is 80 to 100%, and we certainly fall, will fall within that. And... And, you know, we're, we got into this back in 2000, we started developing this product back in 2017, 1617. Our first project was in Greenville, Michigan, and it was 216 units. And Greenville was a community that, that's Myers headquarters, but there's a lot of manufacturing in Greenville, and they just didn't have the housing to support workforce housing. Workforce housing is kind of designed to, it's not, you know, it's not subsidized housing. It's, I mean, in a way it is, because we look for, we look for help from, from the local municipality as well as Misha, from a tax improvement standpoint, but it's really designed to address the, what they refer to as the missing middle. It's kind of that, you know, people who, who, you know, want quality housing but can't, you know, care or aren't willing to pay the higher prices for Class A property, which is what everybody's been building over the last 10 years, just because, you know, it's crazy for 2%. You can make just about anything work, and of course, now to make anything work, you can't do it. It won't pencil unless there's some type of, some type of assistance. And that's why we still kind of saw this coming, that's why we focused on the workforce housing in Greenville, it's been a tremendous success. It's the exact, exact same product, and same amenities, and there were nine 24-unit buildings, and as we finished each building, you know, there was a waitlist, and they moved, we filled it up immediately, and then did that all through the whole project, and this, we finished it in 2019, late 18, early 19, and we've been 97% to 98% occupied ever since. There is not a hundreds, if you always have a period of time where somebody's moving out, you're trying to prep a unit for somebody to move in. But it's, it's, there's clearly a demand for it, and again, that missing middle tends to be, you know, it's typically, you know, nurses, policemen, teachers, service industry, you know, people that, that, you know, that want nice housing, and right now, they kind of only have two choices. It's either, it's either high-end, really expensive stuff, or it's some standard housing, and this kind of fills that gap where they still have a brand-new community degree in that, and using a great product, but at a much more affordable price. So our, our rents, we, we, right now, anticipate it based on, based on the requirements of workforce housing. Our one-bedrooms will be about 1,100, our two-bedrooms will be about 1,400, and three-bedrooms will be about 1,700. So it's about a $300 jump for each additional bedroom. And as Doug mentioned, you know, we get a lot of different arrangements, you know, we get, we get families, we get two single, you know, two teachers that go in together and get a two-bedroom and share, and that's why, the only thing we learned in Greenville was we needed more parking. We met the code in Greenville, which I think was one and a half per unit, and then we found out that wasn't enough, so now we're up to, it wasn't 1.7, almost 1.8, which is, which should more than accommodate the need for parking, so. So I've done all the talking. Any questions?
Any questions, applicant? I have a couple. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Yeah, the discussion with Goodwill for a grant, is that a final answer, or is...
So, yeah, so that's really just kind of exploring, and, and part of that, the impetus for that discussion is really kind of through our master plan. We're looking for like, housing that provides a diversity of diff, developments that provide a diversity of different housing for the workforce. So, you know, as opposed to concentrating, you know, maybe 60%, 50% AMI in one place, kind of having it distributed throughout the community. So if, if this was something feasible that, that Crimson decided to move forward with, the township could be an applicant for a My Neighborhood grant. And, and just to clarify, this, this housing that, that Goodwill, that, that we met about, these are people that would be, you know, they'd be permanently, so it'd be one year or more. It'd be people that are working, that have jobs, they would be screened, they'd have background checks. So it would be, it would be housing to kind of accommodate people that are below that 80% AMI, but just kind of looking for ways to have kind of a diversity of different housing options.
Okay. So the township would be the applicant?
The township would be an applicant for gap financing.
Gap financing.
And that's, again, that's just exploratory, so that's kind of all on the financing piece and, and the, yeah, but good question.
Is that something you have done in other developments?
We haven't, but the, the My Neighborhood program is new. I don't know how new Claire made it, I think within the last year. And so, and, and not unusual for Misha, they put out the program, and they start asking questions, and they say, well, I don't know, I'm looking at that. So we're still trying to figure out really what it means and what the implications are for the developer. We're, you know, we're going to participate in any program we can that opens housing to those in need. It's just a question of whether the program works, whether it's financially viable and makes sense for, you know, for, and we're still, we're still trying to figure out, you know, exactly how it works. Was her name Nora? Yeah. She's with, she's with Goodwill, and she's put back with Melissa questions to ask Misha, and we said, I haven't heard back from her yet. So we're working with her, trying to figure out if this is something that will be applicable or not, so.
My questions were just tied to the finances of it, only because you're, you're well below what we've been seeing lately, as far as projects coming through, so that makes all the sense in the world in terms of targeting the, the Misha Tiff. I was just curious, you've got kind of a draft outline in that, what does timing look like for submittal? It's something along those lines.
Well, I guess the, if, if, if we're fortunate enough to have you approve the project this evening, the next step would be to go in front of the brownfield authority, which I assume comes to township first, and then to the county. So that would be my first question for Claire's, how do we, how do we get on the next agenda?
Okay.
And we, because we have recently, we're in the process of, we're about two months ahead of this project, and the project we're doing in Meskegan, and we've already gotten Rob Field approval there, and it's going off to Misha on Friday. And so because it's the same project, without going on a complete hard bid, we can extrapolate and come up with a pretty close budget estimate of to put the brownfield plan together and do a pro forma, and we would honestly bring that to the meeting and share it, and let you know what the, you know, what the gap is and what we'll be looking for.
Got it. Only to be nosy, last question for me is, the soil's out there fairly wet? Question mark? I don't know. I've seen, I was only thinking about that for...
We've been working on that property for years, so...
I was only thinking about it from a foundational standpoint.
No, actually, it's not, I just think, the base soils are sand. It's got a lot of lonely areas in it, but the base soils are sand. Then the groundwater is about five, six feet moving through there, under, under the suburbs of, and a month later, head of trouble, and a regional engineer looking at it, and he felt really good about telling their dad that he was in college, and they helped to build this farm that's successful for years, you know. So it's, it's not saturated, like a lot of areas, it has water, the base is the water, but blue so there's...
Got it.
Is it wooded before it was agged then? I seem to remember.
It's not been wooded since I first walked on it 35 years ago.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions, more curiosity than anything else. In the demographics, you know, you'd mentioned policemen, firemen, et cetera. How many of those are families?
I guess I'd have to defer to Kevin from our experience in Greenville, and how many are families with children?
Yes.
Children?
And can you please come back, yeah, up to the microphone, because we're recording. Thank you.
We're probably close to 20% family in Greenville, specifically the children, or units of children.
Tying this in, when I looked at your drawings here, and I was finding where the compactor was and things of that nature, what is the plans for the school children? I know we talked about, you know, Claire mentioned TCAPs, but where would be their assembly points to be picked up by the buses on, you know?
Wherever, wherever the school tells us they want it.
Okay, so, so the school is the one that's going to determine where the pickup points are? Okay, because I was thinking you might have one like at the clubhouse, given inclement weather and things of that nature, so.
And that would make sense to me, but...
Well, yeah, and, and I was just looking at the distance, let's say, from Building 10, you know, to, to somebody who's in Building 10, how far would that be to get, what's the distance on that?
Well...
I, I mean, you probably need a couple of places, I would think, as assembly?
Yeah, I was originally thinking, it might be best right up here, because it's kind of central to everybody.
Right.
But it just depends on what the school district, how they want to enter the site, exit the site, what makes sense to them, so.
Only if you're about 1,000 feet away. It's not, 1,500 would be considered the general walking distance to a lot like that.
Yeah, okay.
And we can do the pedestrian routes, but it, as it has yet to, I swear to figure it out how to associate itself with its clients.
Yeah, but yeah, as you all know, we, all of us walk two miles uphill. Always, huh? Yeah. Snow is about up here, right? We have ropes around our waist, right? Yeah, I know. I was just curious about that, if, if there's consideration and thought had gone into that. The other item is, I went out there to take a look at the property, and you're right, there's nothing there. I mean, it's pretty flat, but when I was there, I went in by the Meadow, Meadow, was it Meadowland?
Meadow Park.
Yeah, Meadow Park. And there was, in, in the interest of, you know, full disclosure, I went there, but when I was there, there was some metal bending and some noise of equipment from the industrial side. And I'm just wondering, what thoughts do you have as what would be the buffering on that side? I mean, because I'm looking at it now, and, you know, I can't really...
I'd say it's pretty thin out.
It's, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, you have to, and actually, to have an impact on noise, and I think we went down that road a few years ago, you'd have to really establish almost a wall that would reflect the noise on it, because trees don't do a whole lot. But to the marketplace and urban developments, this noise is a little bit similar than, you know, the pizza guy going out at 2:00 in the morning or whatever, and there's activities going on, it's just a factor of growth on you, it's just a different factor on you, so.
Well, I don't think there'd be a lot at night.
Right.
But I was thinking like, because only when I was there, this was going on. And the thing that popped into my mind was, okay, fine, is there any, you know, usually is tree lines and things like that? Is there any fencing involved, or?
We did try to, as you can tell, keep the buildings, you know, as far north of the site as possible to help, help with that. And I know there's some construction going on there now, so I don't know if the noise is coming from the automotive facility, I'm not sure where...
Yeah, that's where it was.
Yeah.
And I think that's the only one that really, from what I saw, would be the item that would do it, but just, just a comment and observation, that's all.
Well, you're right.
Any other questions?
Going back, or going off of the neighbors thing, have you talked to the residential neighbors about your traffic flow? And I know their existing site is pretty heavily wooded, and I see that you have the buffer strip there, but parking and main drive coming in, your headlights are shining on the property.
Yeah, and we, we, like I said, I was fortunate enough that Teresa agreed to meet with us, and I said earlier, we have lunch together, she refused lunch, she stuck with water. I ate lunch. And, and your neighbor, I believe her name was Sarah, you know, and she was there to part of the, and we talked about a lot of those concerns, obviously. But, you know, you've got your 60-foot buffer from the property line, and these are, these are all carports. So as people are pulling in, you know, some face the building, which are, some, some carports, you know, most of the carports are on the, on the exterior across the way through the building, you don't want the carports covering the front of the building. So you had your 60-foot buffer here, then you had your carports, and the carports are such where they slap from front to back. So anybody who's pulling in, you know, their headlights are, are not going to be up into the windows of houses, and that's true of here and here. And we kept everything away from there that we could in terms of any activity, kept the buildings as far away as we could, and then, of course, part of, part of the site plan costs for, you know, landscape buffer, and of course, their natural trees buffer a lot of it down there as well, so.
I think the best thing we can do on that, I just did this together one night, is what we did with Elbruck, and reserve a number of trees to go out there specifically site when it's done, where they had park pulling in, and say, okay, this is where we do, okay, fence, or something like that. But at least something to reserve that you can actually want to feel good, instead of making, you know, just a pint of horse. At least Elbruck did work out great, so I think that's the best thing, if you guys could condition that somehow.
I, I really don't have a problem with how you have it spaced out. I just wanted to make sure that you'd at least approached the neighbors with the layout, just because looking at the layout, it's like everything coming in off of Three Mile, headlights are shining, and when it gets dark at 5:00, 5:30 for a few months out of the year. I just, and then, future development to the north, is it, is your plan to only, your main drive out onto Three Mile is only for your development, and the only connection is in the back corner?
Yeah, the Three Mile entrance, and the Meadow Park, and the future connection, we negotiated an easement with the seller, and it's a 66-foot easement, and we each have 33 feet of it, and, and our stub road will come up right to the edge of that easement. And at the time, he develops the rest of the property and puts the street and the connecting bridge in, is when that road will go in. So eventually, there'll be, you know, three access points to the community. This was important, obviously, with fire station number one down here, to be able to get, get through the community and get out to future sections as well, so.
Actually, we had a grading, Claire, one of the last conversations we had with bus service drives, you know, and we actually looked at local examples and said, is this really what we want here? You know, is the lane, parallel lane, it really doesn't do anything, we get it in a commercial environment. We looked at scale, we looked at distances, we tore it apart, and just said, this is probably the best answer for this.
Sure.
It was good.
Yeah, to that, I'm thankful you didn't put the gate in between the industrial and the residential.
Right.
So I applaud you for that. Any other questions, the applicant? Looks like Claire's got a few recommendations in our, in our canned motion, if you will, but looks like they've kind of covered most of that within their presentation, but...
Was the maintenance agreement taken care of? Number four, they kind of mentioned it, but is that...
I presume, yes. Claire had mentioned that they sent that out to the attorney for review.
And then GT Metro Fire and Road Commission, the Road Commission for sure got back to you, and Metro's kind of just verbally said they didn't see an issue?
Yeah, yep. So those will, would all be, you know, this, this approval would be conditioned on getting those final approvals, but yeah, I haven't, haven't heard any concerns from any agency at this point.
All right, I'll move to approve site plan, site plan review 425 on the Crimson project with recommendations one through five.
Support? Unless you have more to add?
Thank you. We have a motion by Paul, seconded by Steve, for approval of SPR 4-25 Crimson with the associated findings of fact and conditions one through five stated within the staff's report. Any discussion on that? All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. We appreciate having you here this evening. Good luck moving forward. Good luck moving forward.
Thank you, Matt, for all your work.
Thank you, Claire. She's awesome.
All right, next up is the master plan amendment, an addition or potential addition of the Beach District Plan as a subplan. Claire, kick us off.
So, um, I think we, we kind of introduced this to you at the last, at our joint meeting, but this, this would be basically a minor amendment to the approved master plan and under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, you can have a sub-area plan within the master plan. Minor amendment process is basically exactly the same process as a major amendment, only difference is it's a 42-day review period as opposed to 63 days. But I think the benefit to this is that this would be, you know, codified within the master plan so that in the future, when we look to zoning changes or other policy implementation, we can back that up with, you know, this is specifically in our master plan. So, that would be the, the recommendation to move forward, just to kind of background on process because we are kind of moving quickly with the, with the public review period, but as you know, the development of the plan has been nine months of intensive community engagement. So, we have the draft plan, it's been reviewed by our implementation team with some significant comments and changes. We've reviewed it with both Planning Commission Township Board. We presented it last week to the Beach District Stakeholder Group and so that's over 100 stakeholders along the Beach District. So, we, um, sent them out the link, we had a lot of them attend the breakfast and, and had some input and comments and had a good discussion, particularly discussing some of the financing options in the Corridor Improvement Authority. So, um, I guess next step would be the, the Planning Commission can make a, ooh, um, we should probably open that door. Thanks, Ann. The Planning Commission can, tonight can make a recommendation to the Township Board because the Township Board would be the entity to actually send it out for the public review period. So, you could recommend tonight, make a motion for the Township Board to send it out for public review. If the Township Board decided to send it out next Monday evening after the 42-day period, we could schedule a public hearing for the, um, May meeting, the regular May Planning Commission meeting to formally adopt it. Even though the Township Board doesn't have to adopt a master plan, we'd recommend that the Township Board also adopts this plan after the Planning Commission, just because the implementation team is a subcommittee of the Township Board, we're going to be looking at financing and other types of improvements, but...
I like it.
Happy, happy to answer any questions. We've got the draft plan in the packet, but it's also on the Township website and so definitely open to any comments you have over the next several weeks, months.
Any questions, Claire? I feel like we've really dug our teeth into this one. With that, any recommendations and motions?
I'll make a motion to recommend that the Township Board send the draft Beach District Plan, which will serve as a subplan, to the Township's 2030 Master Plan out for the 42-day public review period. Support?
Thank you. We have a motion by Rhonda, seconded by Renee, for issuing the master plan out for consideration of the Township Board. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving right along to our next element, which is public comment round two. Anything you missed in the first round? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Um, it's a theory, um, East Bay has a precedent for over 40 years. Knowing that this has been a growth area where I live and thankful that nothing has happened in the last 40 years, um, I just think that it will impact the whole township and I'm sad to see that we are the only ones here. My neighbor couldn't make it because of work, um, but I, I think it does impact the whole township, any kind of growth that's going to be going on and a main artery as Three Mile is. And I just wish that, I guess, there was more public notice. I know that it ran in the ticker, but I don't know what else would have got more people looking at this big, huge project. Um, I know it's happening in my backyard, but it will impact everybody that drives down Three Mile, you know, coming or going. So, I'd just like to say appreciative that I was able to meet with the group from Crimson earlier today and just kind of get down and see what they're all about and what their plans are and ask some questions upfront, um, but I don't know if there's something more that the, the board, the township could do to at least let more of the residents know what's going on. You know, I was here several months ago when a, a project going up around Four Miles, you know, the place was packed, but I know it impacted a lot of people that resided right there. There's only three of our houses right there with it going in our backyard, but that's all I'd like to say is it's going to impact more people than just us, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire, for putting us together as far as you know, it goes. Thanks.
We appreciate it. Okay, with that, we'll wrap up public comment. Any future agenda items we need to discuss? Nothing on the top of my list. We should have rap scoring going on live right now for those parties interested. We'll see how they shake out.
I was going to see the Red Wings.
I didn't score anything in my backyard.
Fingers crossed.
Yep. Um, upcoming meeting dates, the next one is a month from now, Tuesday, April 1st at 6:30. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.